I call to order the Oswego Community Unit School District Board of Education, Board of Education meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Serone?
Here.
Dr. Martin?
Here.
Dr. Murillo?
Present.
Dr. Polak?
Here.
Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Ms. C?
Here.
Ms. Winma?
Present.
All right, let's all say it for the pledge.
One nation, under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
All right, 4.1, the pride recognition.
Thank you, Board. If we can have you join us in the middle this evening, we are excited for our very first pride recognition this evening. Tonight, we acknowledge our pride winners from Boulder Hill, Brokaw, Old Post, and Oswego East High School for the month of October. Pride stands for proudly recognizing individuals demonstrating excellence. The Board of Education began this program 10 years ago to recognize, promote, and celebrate the many contributions made by teachers and employees across our district. We thank our generous district partners who support this program, which is presented by Surf Bank and supported by donations from Chick-fil-A, Culvers, Imagination Print &amp; Design, Huntington Learning Center, The Scoop, KCT Credit Union, Texas Roadhouse, and 113 Main. Your contributions make this program successful. We'd also like to thank all those who nominated individuals for consideration and note that each nominee has been recognized with a certificate. Awardees, after your name is called, we ask that while we're sharing your nomination, you come forward to be congratulated by the Board and Dr. Calgotti, and then stay up front until the rest of the individuals from your school have been called, and then we'll do a photo. First up, we have Boulder Hill Elementary School. Cheyana Millard puts her heart and soul into supporting students and her community. Often one of the first ones in the door and one of the last to leave, she is happy to help wherever needed and does so with grace. As shared by one of her nominators, Cheyana creates a welcoming and inclusive environment wherever she goes. She demonstrates the qualities that I hope all kids will learn from. Congratulations. Lisa Luano is a kind, compassionate, and deeply dedicated to her students. She is committed to creating a supportive and engaging learning environment for all. Her guidance and encouragement allows students to excel. As shared by a parent, she takes the time to understand each child's needs and tailors her teaching in ways that truly fosters growth and a love of learning. Congratulations, Lisa. Also recognized from Boulder Hill is Gabriel Guzman. Dedication and reliability has allowed him to make a positive impact on Boulder Hill. He works to ensure the building is safe, clean, and welcoming for every student, staff member, and visitor. Although much of the work is behind the scenes, it doesn't go unnoticed. A nominator shared, beyond his technical skills, he shows genuine care for the students and staff, always greeting others with kindness. Congratulations. We're going to ask our, any building administrators here this evening from Boulder Hill to come up front, and we're going to do a group photo. Congratulations, Boulder Hill. Our next spotlight is on Brokaw Early Learning Center. Described as "a champion for all students," Elizabeth, or Beth Gioesia, brings a wealth of knowledge to the work that she does in supporting the needs of students within the deaf and hard-of-hearing program. In addition to serving her students well, she's a supportive and guiding teacher assistants and related service providers who also care for her students. One parent stated, "She is one of the few teachers who has the gift to set a positive foundation in a learning experience." Congratulations, Beth. Georgie Hatzel. Warm professionalism and humility make her an incredible asset to her school's community. She approaches every task with care and efficiency, keeping the needs of staff, students, and families at the center. She greets each person who walks into the office with a smile and genuine kindness. She is deeply committed to being a partner in the educational success of our students, and she never hesitates to provide support needed for our building to thrive. Congratulations. An outstanding model for the entire SD 308 community, Pam Bittner, does everything with kindness and care. Often the first point of contact for families in our district, Pam allows the heart of Brokaw to shine brightly in her interaction with others. She helped bring the building's aquarium to the school in 2007, which serves as a symbol of calm and joy for students, staff, and visitors. A nominator said, "Beyond her technical skills, Pam's true gift lies in creating a nurturing and welcoming environment." Congratulations, Pam. Will invite any building admin here this evening? Okay, we'll do a group photo. Congratulations, Brokaw. Now it's time to celebrate Old Post Elementary School. Jamie Kickert's dedication to and advocacy for her students serves as an inspiration to her fellow staff members. She is a member of several committees within her building working to foster growth in her building and in the district. Always smiling, Jamie often sacrifices her own planning time in the aid, to aid the well-being of those around her. As shared by a nominator, she sets an example of a dedicated staff member, not only by dedicating her time, but also by collaborating with others openly and passionately. Congratulations, Jamie. Katie Gugar goes above and beyond for all students in her building. She is flexible, always available to help when a student is in need. She even helps with managing the crosswalk before school every morning, rain or shine. As her nominator stated, "She is a trusted adult for many students at Old Post, and I personally feel better knowing she is a part of the team." She is the heart of Old Post. Congratulations, Katie. A supporter of her students and positive school culture, Christina Williams actively contributes to a community where everyone feels connected and supported. She often sets aside her own time without hesitation to be fully available to the students who need her. Outside of her daily role, Christina is a co-leader of Hope Squad at Old Post, a program dedicated to promoting friendships, bullying prevention, and mental wellness. A nominator said, "Her approachable demeanor and unwavering professionalism allow her to be a true lifeline to those who are struggling and a trusted advocate to those who need a voice." Congratulations, Christina. We'll invite our building admin forward, and we'll do a group photo. Congratulations to Old Post. And our final building celebration this evening, last but not least, is Oswego East High School. As a dean of students, Brandon Venters strives to develop positive relationships with all students at OE. He is patient and fair with students, holding them accountable while maintaining their dignity. This year, he has stepped in to mentor new members of the dean's office. As shared by a nominator, when staff reach out for assistance, whether it's in the classroom or with a specific student, he is quick to respond, often dropping whatever he's doing to help lend his support. Congratulations. For the past several years, Esmeralda Foster has poured into her students to ensure that they are successful. She gives her students her all through her teaching and sponsorship of the diversity club. She also gives of her time as a mentor to new teachers. As one nominator shared, "Students often say that she is their one trusted adult. She is an incredibly important part of our ML team." Congratulations, Esmeralda. As both a coach and a member of OE Student Services Team, Catherine, or Katie, Flaut is dedicated to the students she serves. She constantly looks for ways to support her students and athletes, using words of encouragement to build them up. Her kindness is contagious. A colleague stated, "I am truly amazed at her natural ability to connect to students. She is an amazing mentor and a positive force to all who meet her." Congratulations, Katie. Sandra Cook exemplifies the district's values through her support of her students. She is ready to assist her students at all times, and her character shines through her kindness towards others. A nominator said, "She is a very understanding teacher who is very nice and helps her students whenever they ask." Tonight, we congratulate you, Sandra. Will Mueller works to create an environment of positivity and values students as integral parts of the OE community. He is helpful to his students and serves as an inspiration to the staff around him. He exemplifies what it means to connect with and advocate for students. As shared by one nominator, Will not only cares about his students as learners, but he pushes them to be their best in any situation they may find themselves in. Congratulations, Will. We invite any building admin forward to join us for a photo. Congratulations to OE. Thank you, Board. Honorrees, we'll ask you to proceed down to the hallway. We're going to do a gathering at the landing there to do one group photo. We thank all of our families and colleagues who were here tonight to support our winners, and our next round of pride awards is open and accepting nominations now. Thank you.
5.1, your attendance report.
Good evening, Board. Always a great way to start our evening, to hear and to be a part of the pride awards, and I want to thank the Communications Office and RIN for coordinating all those experiences and opportunities to celebrate our staff, and to our school leaders, and everybody who's contributed. Thank you so much. This week, I want to start off by acknowledging and celebrating Principal's Appreciation Week. We are so grateful to our school leaders who spend countless hours dedicated to their students, staff, and communities. Their contributions don't go unnoticed, and during this week, we extend to them a special thank you. They received, we see, want to share a little bit what their principals got this year, just as a small token of our appreciation for all the hundreds and myriots of things they do.
Sure. So we did kind of a warming hearts, warming hands theme, so our principals were surprised by their team leaders throughout this week with a mug and some warm beverages and little cookies, and then there's a special store for them to be able to choose some SD 308 branded warm weather gear from. So we thanked them this week.
Thank you for that. Again, thank you to all our administrators. We recognize that schooling success is really due to your leadership, and we thank you for that. Our next huge shout out to everyone who participated in this was this year's district-wide food drive. What an incredible success. Together, we collected funds and goods totaling 1,000, wait, 186,467 items for the Kendall County Community Food Pantry. This cumulative over the last donation brings us to just shy of 2.3 million items donated, contributed. Congratulations again. Yes, that does deserve a round of applause. Congratulations again to Churchill on securing the grand champion trophy. This is hard fought for, and you know, what a great way to compete in addition to this year's crosstown. What an exciting football game. For those of you who were there or watched, really wonderful celebration. We want to thank Surf Bank for their contribution of the trophy award for this year. This is their 21st year. Ally Bank and Surf Bank for really sponsoring this event. It's a great way for us to come together as a community. From both sides of the field, you could feel the love. From both sides of the field, you could feel the energy and the support for what it means to be a part of this community. And I want to thank all of our players for their sportsmanlike behavior. I would say that both teams are really head to head, and temperatures are high. I've played on a little bit of football, believe it or not, and I know what that can feel like. So thanks to all of our athletes for their sportsmanship, because ultimately, when we show kindness, we all win, even on the football field. So I want to bring us to the next thing. In our district, we have worked very hard over the last couple of years to really build a process for how we do business, whether it's how we think about changing our budget process, whether it's how we think about a strategic plan, and that includes when we want to think about divesting of a property, right? So there's a property, Old Traber Junior High School, formerly, which was a junior high property. This building has been vacant for many years and has had significant structural and water damage, and probably about 10 years ago, the district made a decision to not invest anymore in that property. And really, when you go through it, you'll find that there are phones that are like from 1985. There are buttons, like physical buttons you push in and out, whether you want to get something to work, like an intercom system where you kind of pick up, like, hello, somebody there on the other side? Literally, that's the age of the building, of what you see in there. So the district, to their own credit, really 10 years ago, made a decision to stop investing. If you know anything about property, when you stop investing in property, it starts to die, to disintegrate, right? So there were some shifts, and so there are parts of the building that are being used by the food pantry, and in our process, we've definitely identified ways that we're going to continue in our district to support that extremely important part of our community, as you saw what we did on Friday night at the crosstown game. So through our long, our strategic plan and the long-range facility plan board, I want to highlight that we've been focused on aligning our resources with our instructional goals. The Old Traber site doesn't fit within that vision of thinking about how we articulate and shift our resources, especially for a building that's been left the way it has been for 10 years, really eight years prior to my arrival. And in response to a public request for proposal, again, process, we received a developer who proposed an affordable housing project, and I would say it's actually more, not an affordable housing, it's really, it's a housing project that provides additional residential properties and access to people in this community in that area. This reflects a growing need in the community, is what the partner has said, Cordean Clark has said multiple times, that their assessment is this, and they brought this forward. To be clear, School District 308 is not going to be managing, we're not involved in the management business of a project like this, which is why ultimately this project is being brought, and we approached the village to consider essentially taking on this project. Until tomorrow night, I will be at the village, and the developer will be presenting this to the village to ask essentially for their support of the next phase of this project. This is not a final decision. This will then come back to this board for review. Again, the redevelopment of this site, and by a different party, being able to divest of this would allow us to have more funds to support staffing, more funds to support programming, and really ultimately be able to provide the district with greater tax base of funding to support the way in which we want, we do fund our schools in this district. We really encourage everyone to stay informed and to share your feedback. This Wednesday night, we actually have a Places and Spaces event. So if you're, if you have not made plans, please make plans, join us for our engagement. It will be 6:00 PM at Thompson Junior High School. You'll get to hear from architects. You'll get to hear about the ways in which our building facilities need support. It's a huge need in our district in terms of what we are working on, and then please come and participate and join us in that effort. And again, we've got process, and so when things are moving, we want to make sure that we get the voices of our community, and we won't make decisions without the Board's full approval. There is no separate agenda from that. I'll now invite the board members to give any more positive shout-outs from across the district.
All right. Ally Wordle of Oswego High School is the 2025 IHSA Girls Golf State Champion for Class 2A. Her two-day total of 136 allowed her to win the championship by five strokes. Congratulations on this amazing accomplishment. We're so proud of you.
136 would be my score after nine holes of golf. We have another golf-related success story. Zach Johnson of Oswego East High School finished 10th at the IHSA Boys Golf State Final. Congratulations on receiving all state honors, Zach.
The Panther Marching Band recently finished 10th in the state, third in their class at the state, excuse me, at the state marching band competition. This was also the program's second time advancing to the finals. Congratulations, Panthers.
The Trapper Junior High School Band Program has been named a 2025 North Central Region Blue Ribbon Award winner. The prestigious recognition comes from the National Band Association's Program of Excellence Initiative. Congratulations, Panthers.
Ava Rose Michelon, senior at OHS, was chosen as honorable mention winner in last week's Art Connect Ed Illustration Throwdown. She was one of 45 students who participated in this competition, where the artists were given just 90 minutes to produce an illustration based on a prompt. Congratulations.
Last week, Bednarck Junior High School celebrated the end of the first quarter with Houseapalooza, a day filled with friendly competition among the different houses that students are sorted into to encourage teamwork, bonding, and friendly competition. The day concluded with a whole school assembly filled with school spirit.
In partnership with Wabanti Community College, SD 308 put on the third annual Ascend Conference on Friday. Ascend stands for Activating Student Compassion Through Essential Notable Discoveries. This conference brought together students from several area school districts to celebrate similarities and differences while also inspiring growth and leadership. The event was a success. Thank you to our staff members who contributed their time and talents to putting this together.
Thank you very much, Board.
Yeah, thank you. 6.1, Operations Building Update.
We would like to take the opportunity to inform the Board of the repairs that have been made based on the flood that occurred back on August 16 and 17. A building sustained substantial damage as a result of the flood. What I can say is we made a lot of progress in trying to get those buildings on track, and we just wanted to provide update of the repairs that have been made up today. I'm going to hand it over to Interim Director of Operations, or Acting Director of Operations, I should say, Mr. Andre Shonsey.
Thank you, Mr. Obafemi. Good evening, Board. I would like to give you a quick update from the rainstorm that we received on August 17. We put together a quick slideshow here showing some before and after pictures, some of the work that was done in between, and as we go through them, I can discuss the different areas in the three different buildings we're going to discuss tonight. So I will start with Long Beach. Had about seven to 10 large branches that were damaged during the storm. Between our grounds team, our maintenance team, and our building engineer, we were able to come in the next morning, get all those branches chopped down to a manageable size, get them hauled off, get all the debris raked up and ready for the students to come back on the next Monday morning. Part of Long Beach suffered leaking in one classroom in particular that would have been 115. The root cause that we found was some old cast iron roof drains. So we had those cut out. The fittings seemed to be leaking on us. We had a plumber come in, put in new PVC drains. We ended up putting new boots up on the roof to collect all that water, re-insulated everything, and put that room back together. That room in total was down for approximately three weeks. So in these pictures, you see the crew that did the demolition, the new drywall, and then while the staff was out of that room, we took the opportunity to completely repaint the entire classroom. Carpets were cleaned, everything was put back together. Like I said, they were out of that room about three weeks. They've probably been in there probably over a month now, back to educating the kids in that space. The next building I'd like to talk about is Oswego East High School. As you recall, it was all three floors in the E Wing. My photos tonight will focus around 280. That was the second floor, and I have two different rooms that I picked out just to make it ease, because a lot of the damage was the same across the board on all three levels. So we have, it's a little workspace. We had lots of water come down through the ceiling. We had to have cabinets removed, drywall removed. Then the crew was able to do the drying process, and then the repairs, new drywall, patching all the holes, repainting. That's some of the work that is seen in these pictures here. And in the next one was a teacher's actual office. This room was directly underneath the third floor. So in that top middle picture, you'll see the entire plaster ceiling had to be completely taken down. So that ceiling was completely rebuilt, lots of patching on the drywall, repainting, and then obviously a complete deep clean, top to bottom for that face. I can also report that the first floor and the third floor are fully back in use. The contractors are coming tomorrow to finish up just a few little spots on the second floor, and our team will be moving the furniture all back in either Wednesday or Thursday into the second floor classrooms. So all those teachers that have been patiently waiting for us to get it done, hopefully by Wednesday or Thursday, we'll be back into that space, and everything should be back to normal. So I think that will make quite a few people happy. And then we have Oswego High School. The picture on the left is the point of contact where the water came in, built up in the courtyard. That mulch line on the bottom of the door shows approximately eight to 10 inches of water that had built up in just the courtyard, and that's what seeped into the main hallway and eventually made it to the gym floor. And then when we arrived Sunday morning, the water was past the bleachers and about a quarter of the way onto the main court. I know it's very difficult to see, but there is water standing on the main court there in the picture on the right. So these two pictures depict the actual deconstruction that we had to do. The picture on the left is what the insurance had approved us to remove to see how far the damage was. And then with your approval, to spend a little bit extra money is when we got the okay to go ahead and completely finish ripping it out and rebuild that whole gym floor with a brand-new subfloor, and that is shown here. And that is shown here. So we went all the way down to the raw concrete. They had a level in there. They re-levelled the concrete floor and we started from the ground up. New subfloor, level concrete. That's the cross hatching pattern that they have down is the subfloor. And then the new maple is what you can start to see going on top of that. And this is our current finished product. The crew is actually back today after a week of drying. They're cutting in the volleyball stanchions. They're putting the base all around the outsides of the gym floor. We feel that we can release it back to the school next Monday. So they can have full use of that. We just want to give it another week before we could pull out.
I was going to say, what was the original date?
Schedule we were shooting for was going to be Thanksgiving.
Wow.
We are optimistic for Halloween, but Mr. Stalker and his crew came in and they knocked it out of the park for us. So having it even a week earlier than what they anticipated, I think is great for all of the high school and all of the staff to be able to get in there. And then we just have a few more. I don't know if you've seen the final product, but that is the gym floor that essentially won the vote. It was recommended to us through the FFC meetings that we send it to the students, staff, alumni for some voting. And that was the final product. The school decided to go with the L back in the center because from both sidelines, it looks the same. It's very symmetrical. And then the day that we started the painting, the lady from the flooring company that came in to do the painting suggested that we change the Panther heads to orange to give it a more contrast. And I think it was a marvelous suggestion because I think they stand out great. So within a week, those kids can have that space back and they can go right back to their learning. And that was all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I just, can I make one comment? So prior to that one week, no one is supposed to go near, breathe on, put their toes on or anything on that floor while it's still curing, correct?
Correct. Actually, we have had that space completely locked down since the construction started because we didn't want coaches going in there. We didn't want students going in there. We didn't want any staff going in there. We have completely had all the doors to that space completely locked with barricades in front of the doors just to try to keep everybody out of there. That's the best that we could do. So yes, nobody has officially been able to go in there other than the staff that's been working in there.
Awesome.
Now I feel like I, I, I really want to go on there.
If anyone has any ideas, don't.
I can get you a tour in there if you'd like to go.
Tomorrow.
By drone.
Any, any, any other comments or questions?
No, just thank you for all your hard work. I know since the storms hit, your team has been working nonstop to get all the damage taken care of so that the students can get back into their spaces. So thank you and congratulations on finishing ahead of schedule.
Thank you. All right, six point two, we have a safety update.
All right, welcome. Mr. Bell, I'll invite you to start us off and thank you to all of you for joining us this, this evening. And I, and we've got other guests with you as well.
Board of Education, Dr. Cogatti, thank you for letting us present tonight. Typically, we give an annual safety update every year and kind of give you a lot of information and a lot of numbers and a lot of things that are really important to the work that we do. So I'll go ahead and introduce my team. You only see a portion of the team that's sitting here, but the next portion of our team is sitting behind us here. And so with that, I didn't switch the, which is the slide here. To my left is Ms. Bailey Campbell. She's our Executive Director of all things, but our Executive Director of Student Services. Further to my left is Mike Frieders. He's our Coordinator of School Safety and Security. He likes to be referred to as Mike the Safety Guy. That's kind of his tagline. As I mentioned, there's a number of our other staff sitting behind us as well. Michelle Pete, Michael Johnson, Emily Hanlon, Camille Simmons, and Tashana Walton. And last but not least, Tolya Prior, Executive Director of High School. We are going to talk about safety tonight and you have a handout in front of you that is a complimentary to this slide deck. That has the same information kind of given in a different, different format, if you will. So please feel free to take a look at that. But this slide deck has that information with the exception of a couple pieces of data that you can follow along with. As always, we want to connect things and everything that we do in student services and safety is no different. It is directly related to our strategic plan that you guys adopted back in the spring of this last school year and significantly in priority four. Obviously, safety, security, social emotional learning, supportive environment, all touch many aspects of our, our strategic plan, but specifically priority four is what we're going to focus on tonight, and that's the wellness priority. We've highlighted some key words there and bolded them so you can see where that lives in that strategic plan and how that then translates into our foundational practices.
All right. Good evening, Board. So when we think about student services here in District 308, we really have separated our department to kind of run two different systems within, one being that safety and security side, the other being that supportive environment side. So as Jeremy mentioned, we're really focused on the safety and security side of things today. And around that is really truly understanding where we stand as a department, where we stand as a district and with you all as a community on building that culture of safety together. So really looking at it from a holistic approach that the only way that our students, our staff and our community are going to feel safe is if we continue to kind of approach this together and make sure that we're walking side by side, hand in hand. So just to kind of set the stage, we wanted to just highlight a little bit as this team has started together, the work that we've been able to accomplish in order to kind of get us to where we are today and where we want to go. So starting in twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm just going to highlight a couple of key points. Really, this year was about equity across, across our buildings. We spent a lot of time and intentionality in making sure that our elementary schools had the same level of safety in terms of cameras as our junior highs and our high schools. So we really wanted to make sure that our elementaries had a minimum of ten cameras apiece because it was incredibly disparate from where we were. So it really came about doing that kind of assessment of where we are at and where we wanted to go. This was also the year that we adopted C-STACK, the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines, as our kind of north star for our district around student threat assessments, which we'll hear about a little bit later. This is also the year that we really started to streamline our investigation template on how we guide buildings to do the work that they do. And that then transitioned us into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year where the really big lift here was active visitor management. And this became the year where we focused on our vestibules in all of our buildings so that we could really confidently say that we had those secure vestibules with cameras that had both a video and a speaker and a camera feature. Also, we really had a lot of intentionality and this was cross-departmental on the call to action. And the call to action was really in tandem and in conjunction with the equity policy that some of the members on this board had a really big hand in passing. Then we transitioned into our twenty-four, twenty-five school year and just a couple highlights here. One of the big lifts from the team was a pilot of a emergency messaging system called Catapult EMS. So that was a pretty innovative thing that we did last year with two of our high schools, OE and OH, and then two of our junior highs, both Bednarsek and Murphy. Continuing some of those pieces, we really started the inception of the Safety Work Group, which is a partnership between district building administration as well as our OVA staff members. And then really just continuing to streamline how we think and do data in our department. Prior to this team really coming together and setting some norms, we really decided that we needed to track a lot of things beyond just student behavior. So diving into nine-one-one calls, fire calls, emergency management, suicidality screeners, and the list really truly goes on. Brings us to this year. We wanted to just do a quick preview. Sixty days in, I think it's sixty, it feels longer and shorter all at the same time. But really so far, we have really focused in on continuing our communication and practicing some of those drills within the administration team. We have fully implemented district-wide Catapult EMS as of October tenth. So those four buildings that I highlighted last year as a pilot, we are now system wide in terms of a Catapult EMS Emergency Mass Communication System. So that was a really big lift for our team as well. Visible badging, as you can see, most of the team members here have their badges, yes. And so that was just a good focus for all of our staff, you know, regardless of title, position and, and building to make sure that we are visibly, visibly badge. Interdepartmental partnership with our friends in technology and upgraded radios and the lift within the department. And then new for this year, which we'll kind of highlight a little bit is in partnership with the Oswego Police Department is station adjustments. And that really is a proactive collaborative approach. The OPD lifted to really make sure that we're doing justice for our students and trying to keep them out of the justice system when there are things that, that occur. All right, moving right along. So I mentioned a little bit about data sets and we're going to dive into those here in a minute. But before we get into the data, we just wanted to kind of level set and just really set the stage for, for what this district is all about. You know, so you can see presented, we have twenty-four schools and programs, including some alternative learning programs, including all of our elementaries, junior highs and high schools. We cover five municipalities, both with police in addition to the fire departments. And then really here's where some of those numbers really stand out, our number of students, our staff and our administrators. But again, coming back to that shared purpose of countless connections as we support our families and our students. So here you'll see again, a number of those data sets that I've highlighted. The ones in red are specifically going to be what we kind of focus on today. Those other data sets not highlighted are in our board member packets and are some of those supportive environment sides. So I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Frieders.
Good evening. So the, really the foundation that we build off of in terms of responding to emergencies starts with our standard response protocol. Those basic actions that we want our staff and students to take in the event of a critical incident. We train and practice with those across all of our buildings, no different than our outstanding athletics and our other activities where they practice every day. We do the same in emergency management. You can see looking at the, the drills required by the state of Illinois that we far exceed that for a number of reasons. We like to do some of our drills early, pre-students arriving in the building so we can do walkthroughs with our staff before students arrive. We can drill with them as well. And then one item that's missing from this list was a new addition last year from a legislative change. I apologize for leaving that off. It's the cardiac response drill. Last year, the state mandated that each building craft their own response plan specific to if there was a cardiac event in the building. So then attached to that is a drill where we practice with our building leaders where we acted, can activate that team and what that looks like in real time and responding to support our nursing staff that's in each location. A great, I have to shout out to Dr. Han then in the back, a great collaborative effort working with her team leaning heavily on those trained medical staff that are in those buildings and working together to help fulfill that requirement as well. Rolling right into that, one of the first numbers here and that's calls for police service here across the district. A couple of things to keep in mind as you're looking at the numbers here. These numbers are from all of our law enforcement partners combined together and they are not specific to school days and school hours. So they could be middle of the night, an activated alarm or something of that nature. On the weekend, if there's an issue, all of those things are, are in the mix as well. As you look at the, the description of those locations, the other locations wrapped in some of our other facilities, transportation operations. We mentioned the old Chopper facility previously, that's in that data set as well. So those are all for secondary schools, calls for service for police. When we look at the next data set for elementary buildings, again, just something to keep in mind, a lot of our facilities are, the way they were designed were commingled with park district property. So there quite often is no real definitive line between what is a park and the park district and our property in the school building. So some of those locations, I think you see that bleed over where it may be an event that's occurring in the park, but it gets attributed to the school when those folks are calling to report an issue or a concern from the neighborhood. The next information that we'll look at are fire and EMS calls. Again, first numbers are from the secondary buildings. And then the next ones are from your elementary and then including broke calls as well. I feel like I have to give a shout out to Wolves Crossing for whatever reason. Wolves Crossing had absolutely no calls for service, no fire calls, no EMS call and no, no fire calls.
Excluding fire drills.
No calls for service. So kudos to them. I don't know what they're doing, but for some reason they had nothing reported in their building last year.
We've given you a little bit of information here, or maybe a lot of bit of information, I would, I would say. But what I want to draw attention to on this slide is the volume. Every day our buildings are expected, our building leaders, our building staff, even our kids and our parents are expected to maintain a level of security in our spaces. Last year, we welcomed over thirty-eight thousand people just through our Raptor system at our main offices throughout the entire school year. That doesn't account for our after-school activities. It doesn't count for our sporting events. It doesn't account for weekend events, facility rentals, any and all of those things that take place in our buildings. And so this is not a lift for this department whatsoever. This is a lift for our buildings. And to, to minimize the impact of welcoming thirty-eight thousand plus individuals into our buildings, they do a phenomenal job. If you think about, you've ever been to a concert, you've ever been to a theater, you've ever been to an event, they essentially load in an event every day and, and offload an event every day. And they do it with whatever hiccups are created, but they do it in a flawless way to be able to make sure that our kids are safe, our staff are safe, and they can keep normal operations running at each and every day. Through those Raptor visitor management, our, our protocols, through controlled vestibules and door one, you will see some of this come out in our White and Company Long Range Facility Planning and Master Facility Plans. You will see it in our security audits and things like that that we're continuing to work with. Burcata access controls Bailey mentioned is kind of that initial point of contact. When we started in this, we had our security, our, our vestibules where you had to walk in, door was open, you walked in, then you punched a button and then you were buzzed into the door. That door one that was open, when you walked in to be able to even buzz the office was right next to a fire pull station in several of our buildings. That means you could gain entry to our building, pull a fire alarm, and we never knew who you were or where you were coming from. So those are just small things that we've tried to be attentive to, remove those potential barriers for security for us. And we've done that through a Burcata, Burcata access control at our main points of entry.
All right. So just a few more data points here. So early on, we did mention in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, our district officially adopted the C-STACK model, Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines as our north star, if you will, for how we address school threats at the, at the building base level. And one of the reasons we really like C-STACK is one, it's one of three gold standard models across the nation. But two, really at the root of the C-STACK model is problem solving, team-based collaboration, and then prevention. And that's really, really, really what we wanted to embrace when we're working with our students all the way down from our littles, all the way up to our bigs. So if you just go ahead and go to the next slide, so this is really kind of just a snapshot of where we're at as a district. So we have three C-STACK trained trainers in the district, which are the three of us at this table, giving us the ability to then train the rest of the district and our teams. We have a district threat assessment team that really kind of guides practice. We have twenty-three based building teams across our district. And then that totals one hundred and sixty-nine total trained threat assessment team members across the district. And just to be clear, that one hundred and sixty-nine really ranges from counselors, social workers, psychologists, teachers, teaching assistants, and of course, our building leaders and our district leaders as well. Here you'll just see a little bit of data and just to kind of note, you'll see the SY twenty-four data is missing from August, September and October. That's because that was really the heart of our implementation and training. So we wanted to make sure that we all had common, you know, ground before we started collecting data. So that's where you'll see the SY twenty-four data pop up in November. This really became about us as a department. How do we streamline this data? Yes, we train our teams, but then we really need to get into the data. What's the data telling us? How do we continue to partner to be proactive? And again, that prevention piece. Part of C-STACK and without getting into the details, because again, train trainer, I could talk to you guys about this for hours. They really classify threats into three different categories. Transient is really being that, you know, threat that can be explained away, whether it's set out of anger, rhetoric, frustration, or, or a port. it's set out of anger, rhetoric, frustration, or a poorly landed joke. Then we move into that serious and very serious where we have intent or potential intent and we're really making that calculated threat to harm and/or potentially kill. So when you look at this data, the fact that we were able to get to the heart of that problem and resolve a majority of our threats at transient is really where we want to be, knowing that there is going to be times where it lands in serious and very serious, and that's where that team based approach is critical so that we can continue to support students. Yeah, so one quick thing is my partner over here, Mr. Frieders and I, Dr. Dewey Cornell is the, is kind of the overall, you know, guide when it comes to C-STAG. And we try to catch as many of his webinars and his check-ins as we can. He does a lot that really brings teams in together to kind of focus in on those trained trainers and those coaches. And one of the statistics that he shared last year at one of our webinars was when he implemented this fully across the nation and the state of Florida is actually statewide implementation. They do the C-STAG model in every single one of their public schools in Florida. They compare data and it really fell in line with our data. 70% give or take is where they were seeing their threats land in that transient bucket, if you will, which is exactly what we were seeing here in Oswego. So it made us feel very confident that our data was in line nationally with what other districts are seeing, especially from the founder of the C-STAG model himself.
What does transient mean again?
Transient would be your lowest level. It's the kind of the situation where somebody may say something out of haste, out of anger. Think about a student, a 10-year-old on the playground that says, I really want to punch you in the face, right? There's a threat there, but can that be explained away? Is that something that is more of a teachable moment? Do they apologize for that or remorseful? There's some things that we work through, through that threat assessment process. The other thing I want to highlight before we move on to this is that threat level does not equal discipline level. We make sure that we, when we assess a threat, we're assessing the threat, what's the potential for violence, what's the potential for harm there? But discipline associated with anything that may come out of student misconduct should be very separate than whatever level that is. And that's that intervention piece, that's that support piece, that's that restorative piece.
All right, and then moving right into mental health and referral GPS. So this is another big highlight and it piggybacks well off of threat assessment because part of that problem solving approach is really getting at the root of where this is coming from. And we know that sometimes it is coming from a mental health crisis or a student who really is in a really deep, dark place that is, that's their cry out for help. So referral GPS is our partnership with Amit Thacker, who we've partnered with them with referral GPS since 2019. And this really is a system in a way that is able to allow our building staff to get referrals out there for parents, students, community members around mental health based resources. So he has done a ton of work and a huge lift across the state to really streamline what resources are available so that parents and students aren't guiding that blindly and trying to kind of figure that out on their own. So through that, we wanted to make sure that we highlighted some data and some of these numbers are, I just really like let them sink in for a minute. So our district staff, and again, this is our psychologists, our social workers, our counselors, our student services team members, our building administrators, as a whole completed over 5,000, close to 6,000 treatment searches for the students and family members in their care. That's huge. Of that, 483 families were actually able to be, you know, assisted through an appointment. And again, I'm not going to kind of read through all of these, but part of that referral GPS platform as well is really streamlining the electronic base of our suicidality screener. So that was a huge lift to get that suicidality screener in the referral GPS platform because we know that if a student is being administered a screener, naturally what comes next? We want to get them help. We want to get them support and we want to do it quickly with removing some of those barriers. One thing that I would, I would be remiss if I didn't highlight is that third bullet point there. Our McKinney Vento families in our district, our families that are struggling and facing home insecurity. So whether they're homeless, doubled up, or currently in shelters. And Amit Thacker, our partner with referral GPS, has an incredible grant program that we are able to get those families support at zero, zero, zero cost. So of our 205 families, we were able to get 39 of those families support through mental health based resources. And moving right along securely, this is a platform on the school or on the student services side of things that really gets it to the root of what our students are doing with their devices. So this is scanning their, not only their email, but their Google chats, things that they're doing on Google Chrome, documents, all of those different communication platforms when they're logged in with their student ID. And really from a student services lens, it's looking at identifying bullying, harassment, potential harm, violence, threat, risk, drug, alcohol, all those different pieces. And flags that data and allows us here at student services to work collaboratively with buildings to address those needs. So here, and again, a couple of data sets, this is really kind of transitioning into the supportive environment side, but we wanted to make sure that we had those highlighted next to that safety and security because they really are partnership, they really are hand in hand. So without getting too far into the weeds, you can kind of see here some of those office managed, teacher managed. This is really what our staff are doing on a daily basis with students around behavior. Office managed are being things that make their way into the office to be directly, you know, handled or supported by an administrator, whether that be a principal, assistant principal or a dean. Teacher managed is the lift that our staff are doing when they're working with kids in those classrooms and have to have some of those conversations around whether it be, you know, insubordination or disrespect. Handle with care is a huge shout out. I see my, our friends over there. Our lift and our partnership with Oswego Police Department, we started this last year, which is why you'll see that there was no data from SY24. But handle with care is an initiative where the Oswego Police Department simply will send an email to the team members here at the district student services office that states a student's name and the words handle with care. And that's kind of just that little reminder that something happened and the police don't go into details and we don't go into details, but it becomes an opportunity for us to then connect with our buildings, let them know that that's a student who may just need a little bit of extra love and connection when coming to school that day. It could be something as drastic as an unfortunate parent passing, or maybe there was an interaction with, you know, law enforcement, whether they got pulled over or some sort of touch point with law enforcement.
Can I ask a quick question on that slide? Is there a reason why the numbers are increasing? Is it because you're collecting more data now?
Yeah, excellent point. So the office and teacher managed. Sure, so yep, office is teacher managed, I can speak to you a little bit. So we just onboarded Power School, I think we're in year three at this point. Yes, thank you, year three. So year one of Power School, which would have been that SY24, was really us learning that system and making sure that we could make it work for how we needed it to work. Our secondary buildings, they do this all the time. They're used to entering data. They were entering with our old power, our old student information system, Tyler. So that was a much easier transition. So we really wanted to make sure we understood the system before we onboarded our elementary, which were, they were collecting data around student behavior in different ways. They were collecting some of those pieces, but really only if it rose to exclusionary. So it really became then an SY25, getting them onboard so that we could collectively then have data sets as the district.
I think the same applies for the threat assessment data, correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yep.
So you know, nothing happens on an average school day, right? But if you take all of this information and you do average it over a typical school day, right? We have 170 school days in the year, give or take, right? You can see that our buildings, on the average, are dealing with 46 incidents of some type of behavior that could happen in a classroom that could be elevated to the office. You can see that they're completing those investigation forums on average three times a day. Securely, notifications are coming in, our suicidality screeners, our police service calls, our fire service calls, all while they're managing the 215 visitors that happened to just show up at their door. Again, this is not a lift for this department. Yes, we support and we track and we monitor and we help to guide and provide that direction to our buildings, but they are the frontline staff. They are dealing with our kids and our families that come in, whether they're happy that day, whether they're sad that day, whether they need food that day, whether they're just really not wanting to be there that day. And so this is the best way that we can possibly put this out here is to say, this amount of need isn't going away. It's going to continue and we have to make sure that we're equipping our buildings with the appropriate resources, tools, and able to be able to support those kids as they come in, support our staff feeling secure in their space. Everybody tends to use safety interchangeably, but safety means so many things to different people, right? Is it psychologically safe? Is it physically safe? Is it a secure perimeter? Is it a secure vestibule? There's so many different things that go into safety and security and helping someone feel like they can enter a space with a sense of belonging. And so again, kudos to this team. I will tell you that you saw the progression of work that occurred from 23 to current. This team didn't start out this size. That was in response to you guys saying, there is a need, we need to devote these resources, we need to be able to track this information, we need to be able to use the data and improve our systems overall so that we can get more proactive, so that we can be more intervention based and more responsive rather than reactive. Where are we going? This is the, kind of the final culmination of, again, things that were listed in that strategic plan, our objectives. We know we still have more work to do and as I said, people are going to continue to show up at our door. So we want to make sure that we can continue to conduct district safety audits. This is not something that's been done, I think, cohesively. We are partnering with DuPage County ROE momentarily. They have gone countywide with many of their initiatives and there's common language that exists in all of those districts and spaces. And so partnering with NISA, which is the Northern Illinois Safety, School Safety Association, they will actually help to support kind of a safety survey audit. And so we're working with John Heterscheid at the DuPage County ROE. More information to come on that. As I said, this also shows up in our long range facility plan and our master's facilities plan, so you'll see some elements of safety and security with regards to what you may pick up on at audit as well. Creating that emergency distance, distant, I can't speak tonight, that emergency response plan and reunification process. All of our buildings currently have reunification plans in their emergency response plans, but what does that look like on a big scale? What if we have a really bad day and we want to continue to make that plan as robust as we can? So we're going to do some more full-scale emergency tests in the summer. We're partnering with local police departments, fire departments, as well as neighboring districts. We're going to strengthen that visible identification system for staff and students and that's kind of an ongoing thing. What does this look like if we, we wanted students to have visible badging, just the same as staff? We need to make sure that just because you're a high school kid and you walk in and that teacher knows who you are, doesn't mean that every staff member in that building does. Okay? So there's a number of different things that we want to look at from a security standpoint. Supportive environment, this is continuing to leverage the data sets that we have. We have panorama data, we have character strong information. We have a number of things, we talked about suicidality screeners. We have to figure out now how to triangulate this data to make more robust systems on the front end and that will partner very nicely with MTSS and many of the things that are happening in that. Streamlining that investigation documentation, these are things around bullying and harassment. How are we responding to those claims? What's the reporting structures we have? And how do we continue to allow points of contact when those events may occur? And then that restorative practices and reentry. Just because a student may make a poor decision or have a bad day, doesn't mean that we're not going to welcome in the back, welcome them in the next, welcome them next day. And so how do we do that? We can't just reenter them right into a classroom or reenter them right into a cafeteria to the officer with that student that they may have had contact with. We need a strong reentry plan, whether that's a parent conference, whether that's a student conference, safety plans, support plans, many of those things to put in place. Oh, that's it. We didn't even put a thank you on the last one. So thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just have, I guess, one question, a couple of comments. I appreciate Mr. Bell, what you said about us like launching big events every single day. Like I think we underestimate, you know, what schools are doing every day in that sense. Even, you know, it just becomes so much of a natural part of your community that you don't think about. In some cases, you're launching two or three big events at high school, you know, think about a whole high school day and then you have crosstown, right? Those are big community events that obviously take lots of consideration in regards to security. And I've always felt like really safe in those areas. So I think that's important. I think others have experienced the same. I think there's been a lot of work done. I'll just shout out Catapult. I am a parent of a high schooler and it's working really nicely because I get texts about, and it's not just emergency stuff. It's like I get, like when my daughter might arrive late to school one day this week, I got a text about that. And so that's, and it's a kind of all in one spot rather than getting from different spots. So that's been a positive for me. Do you anticipate, I know because of the data that we see, like the public might look at that and say, wow, we really moved up in 2025 or like last school year, right? And you kind of talked us through that, like it's more, we're collecting more data now, like we're being more consistent with that data collection. Do you assume that next year then we'll have a better sense of, are we increasing, are we decreasing where that practice will be leveled out so we can use the data?
Yeah, so that's, it's, in terms of the numbers at their core here, in terms of just like the total number of managed incidents, the total number of teacher managed incidents, et cetera, that's a hard number to predict because part of the work that we do is really getting the staff to understand that that data eventually needs to live in Power School so it can be mapped to EduClima, which is going to be our district wide data warehouse. So total numbers may fluctuate, but what I would really like to do some intentional, you know, analysis on between the schools team, the student services team and all of our district partners is the, is the response to that, the action to that. What does our exclusionary discipline look like? Maybe there's more incidents, but we're able to resolve them with peer mediation, parent conferences, student conferences, restorative based practices. So more to come when we get fully onboarded and have that data warehouse up and going so that we can really dive into the data. What I would just say about some of these numbers, a lot of these numbers are hand calculated by our team. So being able to disaggregate and really get into what that looks like from a response is hard to tell, but more to come. That's where I really wanted to focus on as we move forward. So I hope that kind of answers your question without providing a super concrete yes, no.
I think we see too, you've heard the term dirty data, right? So you only get out of, get out of it what you put in. And then she kind of spoke to that is we need to make sure that the data going in is authentic, the data going in is clean, we've been able to scrub it. We have now the opportunity to look at early warning systems and kind of really map out what are some of those thresholds. She alluded to incidents that may result in exclusionary discipline, whereas we may have less incidents, but we're putting kids out of school more. Now we may have more incidents, but we're putting kids out of school less. So it's an opportunity to have additional points of contact with those students, those families, to try and reduce the amount of time they're out of the classroom.
I think just one of the things that I want to underscore, just as we wrap up is, and you mentioned it, which is the EduClima data warehouse that the board approved this past summer. Prior to this, and as soon as it launches, will reduce the amount of workload that your team is managed with right now. So right now, they're exporting data from online databases into spreadsheets, then they're essentially building pivot tables with formulas and they're doing this on a regular basis. And so I just want to think, when we think about our strategic plan, this is an example when people look at it and say, well, you've got things in here that seem very like fundamental. Why is that in the strategic? Because if we don't invest in planning for building all these things, it makes it very difficult to the next stage of analysis and work. So thank you to your team, although you've done this point.
Any other questions? No? All right, well, thank you very much.
All right.
6.3 student assignment.
Want to welcome Dr. Kincaid as a follow-up to our last presentation. Thank you, Dr. Kincaid.
Good evening. So we wanted to come back and provide the most recent update. Last week, our student assignment work group met and our most recent meeting included not only members of our schools, both district and building administrators, but teachers, secretaries, TAs, and we had a few parents join us. So our student assignment work group and a board member. So our student assignment work group is growing. So we wanted to just touch base. In terms of the strategic plan, our focus, we heard at the last meeting about not only our enrollment trends, so our student assignment projections, but also our building capacity. And what we've done is moved into using that data to then propose different phase two recommendations. So as we talked about last year and into this year, phase one of our student assignment plan was implemented this fall. It It established our special education hubs, really focused on our STARS program. There was also incorporation of dual-language program changes. We have opened up a third site, and then also changes with SCI. There was also some changes with DHH, RISE, and ISP in terms of the building locations. Moving in, and this is what our student assignment work group is now focused on, is Phase 2. It is focused really on that Wolf's Corridor, all of our new growth in terms of housing. And as a result of our student assignment projections, what we are focusing on is Southbury and Grand Park, and really looking at their five-year projections. And then most recently, Trauburg has come up in discussion. While it isn't exceeding capacity, it is very, very close to capacity. So we're also looking at Trauburg. Future phases include just anticipated growth. So while last board meeting, we saw we have enough seats over the next five years. We don't always have the right seats in the right spots across the district. So what would some potential realignment look like before we have some additional growth? And then if necessary, some redistribution. So the work group came together and basically identified primary priorities and secondary priorities. So the team decided that we would not be putting forward any recommendations that did not keep Southbury and Grand Park within capacity throughout the five years. So our partnership with RSP and our work group is essentially, how can we move our current student assignments so that we will ensure, based on the data that we have today, that we are in within capacity within the next five years? Phase 2 will focus on areas of new growth. So essentially, the Wolf's Crossing corridor, and that we will implement Phase 2 in fall of 2026. So those were our primary priorities. The secondary priorities, so where is the flexibility to kind of make that happen? Right now, the team is looking at, while they want to maintain feeder patterns, they would consider different alignments, and they're willing to consider different splits from elementary to junior high. One of the examples right now is Southbury is our only elementary that splits to two different junior highs. It currently splits to Trauburg and to Murphy. So in order to accomplish our primary priorities, we might be looking then, instead of Southbury to be split, it could be Churchill that would then split to two different elementaries. So we essentially don't want to solve one problem to then cause another problem at either the elementary or junior high levels. Currently, all of the proposals being examined do not have any impact on high school, either OH or OE. So the potential growth along Wolf's Crossing would be looking to realign a small number of elementaries and potentially junior highs. The other secondary priority is transportation. We have some situations where we have neighborhoods or subdivisions that essentially drive past one elementary or junior high to then go to another. So while that is not our primary consideration for Phase 2, it is a consideration in terms of proximity of our neighborhoods to our school locations. So the next steps of Phase 2, sorry. We are reviewing quite a few different scenarios in partnership with RSP. Once we kind of land on a few scenarios that meets our primary objectives, we will then present, and our goal is for our community engagements to have those scenarios lined up. Our community engagements are in the middle of November. We will then also be discussing grandfathering, attendance transfer requests, and then transportation, and starting to look at Phase 3. And then, as I mentioned, our community engagements are currently scheduled for November. It will be a mix of both in-person and survey-based, and then our board proposal in January. So that is where our work group is right now. We just wanted to give a quick update. The work group has come together twice, and then we have also had a few meetings with RSP.
I can, just if you don't mind. So one of the things that I found helpful was when they were coming up with these scenarios, they were running it by RSP, basically to see if it works. So we, a couple scenarios been run by, would make Murphy basically shrink to like 300 students, you know? So there's, it's, it is, it is a puzzle, and, but we're working with our demographer just to make sure that it actually does work too, so.
Just a quick clarification on one of the primary priorities. Just because I'm rereading it and I'm thinking, did I think about that correctly? The second bullet focused on areas of new growth. So I know where the areas of new growth are in our district. Are you saying that only those new developments are going to be considered for, but you're saying those areas, right? Those areas. So essentially, in Phase 2, we are focused within the areas of new growth. But as Dominic just mentioned, we haven't landed on something where we can just change the air, the current or within the last year new subdivision. So it really is a puzzle piece. But the driving force for Phase 2 is the new growth off of Wolf's Crossing. But there is a kind of greater area around Wolf's Crossing, and the elementaries that are the focal points are Southbury and Grand Park. So it would be essentially the feeders into that. Also, Dominic mentioned Murphy, so the junior highs that would then potentially be impacted are Plank, Trauburg, and Murphy. And Bednarzic. So I'm just going to say one more thing to say, make sure I'm clarifying it for myself correctly. Just because I've lived in Southbury for 15 years doesn't mean I'm not in an area of new growth. So I could be impacted, although I've been there for over a decade. Potentially. Yes. Thank you.
It hasn't, but I think that's why I'm kind of pointing out that this focus on areas of new growth is kind of the priority, primary priority.
Am I understanding it correctly? So, yes, like, we, we are looking at essentially neighborhoods along the Wolf's Crossing corridor. We are not looking at like the subdivision of the Southbury that contains Southbury, but there are other subdivisions that currently feed into Southbury that have to be part of the puzzle, just due to proximity to Churchill, to Wolf's Crossing. So essentially, kind of from east to west, we are looking at Southbury because right now, as we saw in our last meeting, if we do nothing, Southbury is projected to be at 950 students, which is not where we want Southbury. So we're looking at Southbury, we're looking at Churchill, we're looking at Wolf's Crossing, and then the four junior highs. In terms of, this is, Phase 2 is essentially the current new growth. So we do know, and we heard from RSP last time, there is also projected growth even beyond that area. So going beyond, so we saw last time that there is projected gross, sorry, even more by Grand Park, by Hunt Club, over by Prairie Point. So we anticipate that there would be Phase 3 changes. But right now, for Phase 2, for fall of '26, we are essentially looking along 30, from 30 to Southbury, so in, in that area.
Thank you for the explanation, Dr. Kincaid. So when we think about specialized program realignment, is that something that we will consistently see as we're thinking about like student assignments? Or are, is that phase pretty much done?
So we're hoping, that's why we did that phase first, is we kind of locked in those locations, and we wanted to make sure that especially our STARS program, that students had the opportunity to attend an elementary, well, maybe not their home elementary close to their home for K through 5, so they didn't have to continuously change. Throughout the year, and since that recommendation came forward in Phase 1, there has been discussion about potentially another skills location, but there hasn't been discussion about moving programs around again. Dr. Dubiel, is there anything else that you would like to?
I mean, I think that's an opportunity, do you want to add to that, Dr. Dubiel, other programs that maybe we have to review regularly?
Yeah, in addition to thinking about skills, we know that we are also.
I think you turned off your mic, actually.
Can you hear me?
Not yet.
Okay.
There we go.
All right, okay. In addition to thinking about like a west version of the skills program, we're also thinking about SCI, and as we know, we're phasing that out and what that looks like for Old Falls specifically, because that's where one of our STARS class, or one of our STARS hubs, but currently only goes to 4th grade, so we need to, and we're having those conversations of how we make space for them in 5th grade and honoring what we have going on for the priorities, Phase 1, Phase 2 at the moment for student assignments. So we're very much part of that process.
And these things are, and I think you used the word process, right? So this year, we're doing a curriculum, an audit of our programs. Any major changes will be done systematically and are part of a process that will include significant review before any final decisions are made, so. In a nutshell, so if somebody listening tonight came in at the part where we're reducing Murphy to 300 students, let's just make sure those soundbites, for anybody who just started listening at that very moment, I think if you would just make sure we close out with clarity so that nobody who just tuned in at this moment walks away thinking, well, I heard last night at the board meeting, they're reducing Murphy 300. Did you go to Murphy? You see, there you go, who's going to go home, mom, they're reducing Murphy to 300, so.
So the summary is currently, our junior highs, Bednarzic, is just under 500. Murphy, Thompson, and Plank are in that 700 to 800 range, and Thompson, or Trauburg, is just over 1,000. So while we do not want to significantly unbalance our junior highs, we want a plan that works, again, for our primary goals of ensuring Southbury and Grand Park are within their building capacity and that we do not take Murphy down to 300. So we are looking at Wolf's Crossing, Southbury, Grand Park, Churchill, and then Trauburg, Murphy, Plank, and Bednarzic. And again, it might, the, in order to make sure that Grand Park or Southbury are within their current building projections, we would then potentially be looking, if we change a subdivision from one elementary to the other, in order to maintain the feeder pattern, we would potentially then consider changing the junior high to align with the element.
So if you didn't know, I was an open book before. Those are the things that we were discussing in that committee, so. Any other questions? No? All right. Are there any?
Thank you, Dr. Kincaid.
All right, 7.1, public comments. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback we receive from our members of the public and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Individuals interested in speaking to the board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the secretary to the board. And any members of the public who have not yet turned in their public comment card to the secretary of the board are asked to do so at this time. When the secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name for the public record, and provide your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to five minutes per person. The board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Comments should address the Board of Education as a whole and not be directed to an individual board member, audience, or staff member. Follow-up to your questions or concerns may be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. Thank you.
Carol Cunningham?
She may have just stepped out for a minute. We can come back to her. We want to make sure she has a chance to speak.
Chloe Sanchez?
Just tap the top one. Nope, still not.
Good evening. My name is Chloe Sanchez, and my son is a 5th grader and in the Deaf and Hardy Hearing Program at Prairie Point Elementary School. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to urge you wholeheartedly and urgently not to end the Deaf and Hardy Hearing Program for out-of-district students who are already part of this district's DHH community. These students are not just names on a roll call. They are children who have found connection, confidence, and community through this program. For many of them, this district is the only place where their educational needs have been met. Ending access now would not be a mere logistical change. It would be a disruption to these children's development, their relationships, and their sense of belonging, my son included. Let's be clear, DHH services are not a luxury but a lifeline. They provide language access, specialized instruction, and a safe environment for students to thrive academically and socially. Removing these services from out-of-district students, students who are already enrolled would be disastrous developmentally for our children. We, as families, chose this district because of what it could provide our children in DHH education. We've built our routines around it. We've trusted this district with our children's futures. To revoke that trust now would send a message that inclusion and equity are conditional, that they depend on zip codes rather than needs. I understand that budgets are tight and resources are stretched, but I ask you to consider the cost of exclusion. The emotional toll on these students are children, disruption to their learning, the message it sends about who we prioritize and protect. This district has been a beacon of support for DHH students. Let's not dim that light. Let's continue to lead with compassion, with commitment, and with the understanding that every child, regardless of where they live, deserves access to the education that helps them thrive. It's probably safe to say that you are all here today because you genuinely care about the educational needs and well-being of children, that you are deeply committed to each student's future and their academic success. And I think that you understand, or at least have an idea, of just how damaging a change like this one most likely will be for a child such as mine. And what I know is that you, as a board, hold a great deal of power. You have the power to change the lives and futures of children, especially those who need it most. I just hope that you will use that power to do what's right and show my child and his DHH peers that this is their community and this is where they belong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Cunningham?
Can you use a mic just so that we can make sure that people online are not going to be able to hear you?
Okay, so my granddaughter is in kindergarten, and like many young children in Oswego, she faces significant challenges every school day. There are no sidewalks for her to walk. There are no sidewalks for her to walk on in my neighborhood. Our roads are only plowed one lane wide during winter months when they first come through. These children are coming outside in the dark sometimes or coming home after dark sometimes and expected to walk a block in the middle of the street because there are no sidewalks to come home. This is a very large safety hazard in my mind. As a as a parent, grandparent, it's really hard for me to understand why the school district doesn't change this for the students in these neighborhoods. And I know that our neighborhood is not the only one. Again, what I've said is this is a serious safety hazard. And I will read from the Illinois law that section that states a vehicular safety, serious safety hazard exists when a pupil is required to walk along normally traveled roads or streets where walking is alleged to constitute a serious safety hazard due to vehicular traffic or rail crossings as determined by the Illinois Department of Transportation. So having a child walk down the middle of a street is a problem, especially during the winter months. One of the Oswego district rules also says for these students to stay off the road at all times while waiting for a bus. So they are again causing an issue. Where is this child supposed to stand? Are they supposed to stand in knee deep snow to wait for a bus? My kindergarten grandchild does not stand as tall as the hood of a car. When a car comes around the corner, they're not going to see her. They are not going to stop. They are not going to slow down. This is a new existing issue with drivers these days. So there's my example, and I'm hoping that the district can do something about this. I have tried reaching out to transportation to no avail. I promise we'll call you back. Nothing ever happens. So the next step is the district, and I'm not even sure where to go from there. But I believe it is a real issue that should be addressed by someone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alexa Ludwigson?
Hello, my name is Alexa Ludwigson and I'm a freshman at Oswego High School. I would love of you guys to add an honors ASL three and four because ASL is the highlight of my day. As a language, I love learning ASL because the learning environment is more free and welcoming versus other languages. One and two have provided me with great experiences with the homecoming parade and signing the national anthem at the crosstown game for ASL for ASL club. After high school, I can use ASL to either interpret for others or just use it as a way to communicate with the deaf community. ASL three and four will assist me in getting into college because they colleges I want because they will expect three to four years of a foreign language. Lastly, ASL has such high demand where they do a lottery where a lot of people didn't get in. The three and four will be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Taylor Lees?
Hi, my name is Taylor and I am an ASL two student at Oswego High School. I would like to see ASL three and four be accepted into the curriculum as an honors program next year so I could continue my journey of learning ASL. I believe it'd be a good addition because it brings light to the deaf and hard of hearing students and community. As an avid student, this is a new, unique honors class that would help fulfill the requirements set by avid leaders. And as an individual with dyslexia, the attractiveness of the hands-on class is a positive alternative to traditional honors classes. Because of the interacting you have to do in this class, it helps you build with your self-esteem, helps with social anxiety, and helps you be able to be confident in communicating with new people. By bringing ASL three and four to the curriculum through education, it would bring more advanced opportunities to further my sign language development. I appreciate your time for letting me speak on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's some more public comment. Thank you, everybody. Student board report, 8.1.
So hello, everyone. I would just like to give you a brief update on what the SSAC has accomplished and what our future plans are looking like. So some of our highlights are that each SSAC member has expressed three action plans that demonstrate rightful presence through student teacher relationships. And the SSAC board has determined three themes that can categorize these action plans. So the first one is student-led connections. You can see these through lunch and learns, through like student and teachers eating lunch together. Another category is visual aids. You can see that through artifacts and gallery walks. And the last theme is celebrations and recognitions. You can see that through live feedback walls. So these are the categories for classifying our action plans. And during our next SSAC meeting on October 30, we will narrow these action steps to the final three that can be implemented for the second, the third, and then to the fourth quarter execution plans. And then in terms of our student perspectives, everyone has emphasized that it's really important that rightful presence is recognized at our schools. And it's really important that students and teachers can be on the right level. So the authentic collaboration between them is really important for them to build a relationship. And in terms of our ideas and recommendations, our biggest one is that we want to meet with the principals to introduce ourselves as SSAC board members and begin some sort of partnership. And to update you guys with the upcoming events, on October 23, we have the trunk or treat at Bruckah from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. And this is open to all EC families. And then on that same day, we have learning in the community, Fall Family Fun Day. And throughout this week, from October 23 to the 31st, we have Red Ribbon Week. And then on the 30th, we have talk at Oswego High School along with students from OE and ACC. And then on that same day, we have Family Avid Night from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at EVA. And then finally, we have on October 31st, the Fall Blood Drive at Oswego EC. That summarizes the update for the SSAC.
Hit the ground running. So my my daughter told me about the blood drive on the 31st. I I'm interested in what those advertising. They could have gotten pretty creative there. I'm going to walk around and see if I can find this. So. Did anybody have any? Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Board committee reports. It's like we have each committee. Does anybody want to give a summary of the policy and legislative? Or do you think that we're good with the, you know, the printout?
The safety presentation was 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 the safety presentation, right? One was for each, was part of the was part of the committee meeting. Also, one of the points of discussion was aligning ourselves more with the IHSA in terms of allowing students who are not actively enrolled in District 308 full time to participate in after-school activities. So we had that discussion as well. I think.
I think that's it.
Yeah. Okay. Equity in Learning and Innovation Board Committee Report. Well, Amy?
It's on the on the report, but I'll just kind of write a quick overview. We saw an overview of the early childhood program, which was nice to see that first program that students might interact with in our district. We had a great presentation on the school leader paradigm, which is an administrative evaluation tool for our school leaders that's being implemented here in the district. And then we learned more about accelerated placement and how we're doing that program here in the district. Anything?
Anything to add?
No, I think she about summed it up. I continue to give them a shout out, Dr. Harmon. I gave her a shout out during the policy committee and then we talked about it earlier, but just how our school, our school districts essentially for the IPA school leader paradigm model. There are other school districts in the surrounding area that has essentially used us as the North Star or the blueprint for them rolling this initiative out. And so I think that that is super cool. I was really excited about that. And then in terms of early childhood overview, I won't necessarily be redundant with what Amy said, but she had some really great questions in regards to barriers and things of, you know, that like those natures, that nature in terms of our meeting. But it was just nice to understand that we do have tuition as, you know, an option. And we, what I didn't know is that we designated specific spaces for tuition, right? I want to say it was maybe 50, which I thought was a really great idea and I didn't realize that. And then we did talk about accelerated placement programs. And I'm really excited to know that we've moved the needle in terms of like what the expectations are for students. I believe we've gone from just students being, oh goodness, exceeding expectation to they can be proficient and can be a part of the accelerated placement program. And one thing that we did talk about is just being sure that we're readying our system where all students feel welcome and invited into those spaces when they do qualify for accelerated programming. So.
All right. Finance and facilities?
The operations update was primarily the content of the meeting. The only thing I wanted to add is we didn't include Oswego East and the Performing Arts Center. And an update on that, we are now looking at that to be completed shortly after the winter break. And for anyone who is concerned about certain activities that might be taking that would normally take place, that has all been discussed, taken care of. You know, part of it will be at Oswego High, part of it will be at Benarsick or wherever the most appropriate place is. So all it's all under control.
Yeah, that was the only thing I saw different as well. So. All right, 8.3, board member comments.
Okay, I'll start.
Anybody?
I just real quick wanted to, again, compliment Dr. Waller and her team for Ascend this past weekend. I'm kind of rocking the official Ascend t-shirt, which is, you know, obnoxiously orange, yet 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 subtly very cool. I did get a chance. I'm usually there for the beginning of the beginning of the program and then I leave. But this year I got a chance to sit in on one of the presentations. And boy, it was really great to see the kids, to see the kids, to see the students interact. They needed very little prompting. They were all active participants. So that was great. There were also some very, very cool additions, including a playground outside that I really wish I could have been part of. But I mean, there were, there was all sorts of whatever you would expect to see at a kid's birthday party, I think is the best way, right, was out there. So that was that was really fun. It was a really, it was a really fun event. I also wanted to thank the staff at Fox Chase for having Dr. Calgotti, Mr. Obafemi, and myself over there for some discussion. We had a great opportunity to speak to some of the staff there and what some of their issues are, positive, negative, what their wish list was. It was a it was a good opportunity to kind of get into the weeds a little bit and speak to the people that really are making a difference, which is primarily the teachers.
Anybody else?
I mean, I'll shout out, I know several of us were there in attendance at the crosstown game, but a great atmosphere, great community spirit overall, such a great event. I know it takes a lot to put together and lots of support, but it was a great event all around.
Okay. 9.1, we're going to move on to the approved consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I make a motion to approve all items under consent, including 9.1 minutes from the Board of Education meeting on October 6, 2025, open and closed sessions. 9.2 to acknowledge the FOIA requests received by the district. 9.3 to approve the water billing repayment intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with Fox Metro as discussed and presented.
Second. Ms. C?
Oh, yeah.
Aye. Dr. Polak?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Serong?
Aye.
Ms. Winma?
Aye.
Dr. Moriel?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. 10.1 for information, financial statements.
Thank you. So the finance for the month of September is what we respect for the time of the year. Now, the one thing that I would like to point out is if you look at a fund balance, this is the time of the year where we actually have the most fund balance on it. Because at that time, this time, we just received the second installment of the 2024 levy. So we've been working with, we've done a cash flow for the year since we we kind of have a bad idea of how much money we're working with. As it stands right now, we should be good till the end of the fiscal year. We don't have to do any borrowing, cash flow borrowing. And so today.
Better known as tax anticipation warrants.
So we won't need to do that again.
Better known as, that's funny.
Or payday loan.
So today I work with our municipal investment company to place some of the investment, to put some of the cash that we have on hand to work. So we spend $18.7 million on some treasury bills, which is backed by the full faith and confidence of the US government. And the unfortunate thing about the Fed causing low end rate is that if you're an investor, it's not so good for you, which in this case we are. But if you were selling bonds, which we did a couple of weeks ago, it's a good thing for you. So it depends on what side of the table that you were sitting. So the rate on those $18.7 million is 3.76. The same period last year when we sold, when we bought similar bond, it was more 4.29. So. And then we also sold some, we bought some FDIC insured CDs, $750,000. We placed them with a number of bank, CIBC, Frost Bank. And what we did, we replaced them at less than $250,000. So that means they insure by the FDIC. And then we also bought what is called FDIC CDAs. And with CDAs, we placed $12 million in buying CDAs at a rate of about 3.97. With CDAs, essentially they're CDs, but it's invested in such a way where an entity actually places them at different banks, FDIC insured banks. So they are their securitized at less than the $250,000. So if any of the banks were to fail, we will be fully insured by FDIC. I just wanted to share that with you. So we got some investment, we lather in that to make sure that we put our money to work. And that should provide us extra income to be able to meet our obligation from now till the the end of fiscal year. We did this with the realization of what our cash will be. If you look at the the finance, we have about $142 million in cash. But we didn't invest all of it because we need some of that to pay payroll, to pay for things that we buy as a district. But these are the ones that we need to, we can afford to kind of extend now. For the T bills, the maturity date on them is in January 15 of 26, which is when we need it. And the FDIC CDs due to mature are January 20 of 2026. And then the CDAs due to mature. And then the CDAs due to mature on the 22nd of January 2026, based on our cash flow. Any questions?
So, I don't know, I always, not always, but once in a while I like to remind, or maybe bring up to the board, this is something that was not in place. We weren't investing our excess dollars. This last year probably brought in what, three million dollars?
Over three million, about three point six million dollars.
Those are things that are helping us to, you know, better pay our teachers, better pay our staff, you know? Let's put to good use, all with the idea of student outcome, right? So.
And, and again, for the third year in a row without having to borrow any money to do it?
This will be the third year in a row.
Excellent.
I just have two general questions in regards to, let me make sure I have the statement, the current month summary.
Okay.
So for the financial health and equity, my first question is, are we monitoring how these spending trends affect student services and equity, which obviously would include SPED, transportation, and intervention supports? And then my second question is, do we anticipate any budget adjustments or transfers to maintain balance through the year end?
So we are in developing the budget that the board approved in September. We took that into consideration. The decision was not made just based on finance. The program folks, my colleagues here, special education, learning innovation folks, they were very instrumental in developing the budget. So absolutely, the decision of the allocation of resources was based on the needs of the students. We just provided the resources to make it happen. Now, as far as making transfers in the budget, we don't anticipate doing that. Now, the one area that we know has been challenging is transportation. We are hopeful that we will be able to have a balanced transportation budget, but if we were to go based on what has happened in the last couple of years, it's going to be challenging because of the inherent cost of transportation, the biggest part of which is people, hiring people and being able to keep people. And additionally, we will start negotiation with our transportation partners, OTA. This year, we know relative to our neighboring school district, we pay less for our bus drivers. So I know since the beginning of the year, we've lost them, some of them, but we are committed to make sure, as we did with the three other contracts that we've negotiated in the last two years, to bring them, to make, bring them to parity, to make us more competitive. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Raphael.
Thank you.
Question?
Well, was there anything else that you wanted to bring to us?
The, the only thing that you noticed, we are missing this CPI, which we track every month. The reason being, the federal government is shut down, the fear of labor statistics, they're the ones who actually got the data and released that. The, the September CPI was supposed to have been released on the 15th of October, but since the BLS is closed, we don't have that data to be able to track for the month of September.
When are you going to bring the, the news of the restructure? And the, the result of the, the bond restructure?
We can bring it next month. So do you want me to just kind of talk about it generally, and then we can bring more information?
Well, I, I want to, I want to know what the results were and-
Right. Yes, we will, we'll put it, we'll put it right in. I'll, I'll develop a small PowerPoint too, to go over what was presented to the board back in July, what we estimated, and when we closed. And we got, we actually haven't closed yet, we can't close till November because of the bond covenant. But what we've had, we have, we've done pricing. So the pricing that we've done, are the people who subscribe to the bonds that we had to sell, those numbers are fixed, but we just can't close it till, till November. So at the November meeting, we will bring the PowerPoint that talks about what was projected and what we were able to price the bond at. And it was very advantageous to the district. Thank you for bringing that.
Yeah.
And to the taxpayers, really not the district, to the taxpayer.
So it's really good news for the taxpayers.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, it's great news.
Okay, great. Oh. Ten point two, new IASB resolutions.
So, um, Yomita, talk to it real quick. So last time we met, we talked about what the, you know, IS, IASB Resolutions Committee report is. And the idea, our goal for tonight is to decide whether or not we will recommend adopting or not adopting the one resolution they have provided. And I will take that vote essentially to the meeting at the, at Triple I on behalf of our board. So if you took a look at the resolution, it's asking us to support a resolution about providing support for smaller districts to be able to do bus safety. ISB, IASB's recommendation is to adopt. That would be my recommendation as well, but it's open for discussion or questions if anyone else had any thoughts on it.
What do they mean by support? I mean, is it monetary?
No, well, it would be monetary from the, the, the state, the side of the state. So in the resolution, they're asking that the, they establish a dis, a dedicated school bus safety equipment grant within the State Board of Education so that smaller districts could apply to it basically and have funding to support bus safety. They're asking for like a small district waiver that extends the deadline of when they have to do the bus district state safety stuff. It's just support for smaller districts that maybe have less resources to implement the bus safety pieces that are required.
And for the public, this isn't something that, this is something that the IASB will then advocate for on our, on the district's behalf, on school boards throughout Illinois' behalf, to the legislative committee or community for the state.
This would not necessarily impact us if it-
Right.
Right, because it's a smaller district, but we have the opportunity to support other school boards in supporting this.
So I'm, I would, anybody have any thoughts or against, want to convince me?
I, I would be, I mean, I, my concern is that if we're asking the state to provide funding for smaller districts, is it going to take from funding that we normally would see? But I don't know that it's that big of an issue to-
Right.
Not support it for the whole state, yeah.
Yeah. I don't believe it would be very material to our budget.
No, I, I don't think so either, but I just would be concerned that if they're advocating for that, are they advocating for-
No, I know.
The whole state or just the small district?
I know, it's-
Should we take a straw poll?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll, I'll start, yes.
Yes, recommend.
Yes, recommend.
Well, I do have a quick question.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So are, is this only about the buses, or is this about, there's also red line copy in here where there's certain language that's been-
That's a different, right now, we're talking about the bus piece.
So if you, if you want to talk about all the governing stuff that, that they're redlining, we, we said you could bring some of those, if you have any concerns with any of that, bring it to us.
I don't, I just wanted to know if we're talking about approval, because it's in here-
No, because there's so many, and it was a lot of just changing words and stuff.
No, and I get that, I'm fine with that. I guess my question is, it's on the agenda item for, you know, discussion, but if we were to vote on this, would we too be voting on the red line, like the updated language? The updated language is fine to me, I just want to know.
What are your straw polls?
Yes, yes, is it just the bus?
The resolution, I assume we're going to be fine with any redlining.
Would you like to combine both of them and say, well, let's just do the bus first. Straw poll, we support this recommendation. Okay. So that ends that, so I'll take that piece to the, the meeting at Triple I. Any discussion on the constitutional amendments that they've provided, or the language that they've provided? The recommendation from IASB is to adopt it. I would probably suggest that as well for those, but I'm open for discussion. Or do we go to a straw poll?
Is it primary, it's not part of the five-year read, is it? That they're just updating policies?
There's a lot of different, Tom.
I should probably have to look at the safety report.
When I read through it, it all seemed very-
Yeah.
It's standard.
Just cleaning up the wording, right?
Yeah, most of it was like either specifying processes that were already outlined previously and just kind of like further delineating them, or it was like maybe adding certain like time constraints on things, like submittal dates for certain things or things like that. So a lot of it was just like clarification of existing language.
So we should go ahead and take a vote since we are, you are going to be sitting there voting on them, so.
A straw poll, so I, I'll start this time. I would, I would suggest adopting all of the constitutional amendments provided in the resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was easy.
Yeah. Last, previous years, we've had like five or six resolutions.
And they were kind of meaty.
Yeah, they were.
Oh, yeah.
I was like, I kept on looking through the packet, being like, where's the other ones?
Yeah, I know.
Preparing us for the future.
So, yeah, that's why we decided to bring into the, the full board, because it would be kind of meaty and we would have disagreements, so.
And I'll play Jared Plogar for a moment as the historian and say, previous, I think to like just two years ago, we'd never had representation at this meeting.
Nice.
So, um, so that's fifth for us, we need to have, be represented there.
Yep. So aside from the resolution and the bus, us in support of like the bus situation, would you say that there are any other things that you'd have to, you know, vote on during the conference?
No, this will be all the, all the voting that will happen there, yeah. What could, well, I shouldn't say that, someone could get up during the delegation and say, I would like to add this. And then the whole delegation would have to vote whether or not to put that on there. I've never, I mean, I've only been there once, but I can't, that seems like a stretch for that to happen, but I guess it could. And then we would have to vote on that thing.
And I'm only asking, I'm new, sitting on this side of the table, so I just don't know what that looks like. That's the reason I'm asking if there's anything else. This is really just about my learning.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I did it one year and there was nothing new.
Yeah.
That was, that passed or anything.
Sometimes on the consent agenda, there's, like we said previously, four or five things. And in that case, last year, for example, you, people could stand up and ask something to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. And so someone could say, I want to remove that from the consent agenda, and then there's discussion around it, and then a vote takes place.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Ten point three, board policy first read.
Dr. Kinkane?
So we, on behalf of the Policy and Legislative Committee, we're bringing four policies for first read, four ninety, student activity and fiduciary funds, and five two seventy, employment at will compensation and assignment. These two are press recommendations for the five-year review. There is no recommendation for changes to the policy, no recommendations for the legal references or the footnote. It is simply just a five-year review. So the only thing that would change is the adoption date at the bottom of the policy. The next two are a follow-up from our last meeting, where while we were moving forward with press's recommendation, we also sent this back to the committee to look at seven forty and seven three twenty-five. So looking at seven forty, which is our non-public school students, including parochial and homeschool, what I'd like you to draw your attention to, and in the memo, you have both the existing policy and the red line version, is section three. So the first paragraph is press's recommendation, where it talks a little bit more in detail about our students that do not attend our schools full-time. And then the second paragraph is where we get into some more detail. The most significant change is the wording around the one class per semester. The red line versions is really to ensure that we are in compliance with IHSA. So both the five credits or five, passing five classes, and that also one class must be taken at the school. So in our case, either OE or OH. So our red line policy just brings some more attention to ensure our alignment with IHSA. For seven three two five, we did focus on incorporation of the press language. So that is the first section where you see a majority of red. So the committee is recommending the use of the press language. The second part of that policy is to realign SD three oh eight's unique language to press. That's why you see some adjustments within that language. We did incorporate feedback from our schools team, from our finance team, which included food service. And then the general census is that we will be, we also revising once this policy is put into effect, our administrative procedures around student fundraising.
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Ten point four, recommendation for renewal of milestone support.
So, um, the, the administration is recommending that the board renews on a one-year basis the, the video monitoring system or the district cameras.
And if there's no questions now, obviously you can submit questions after the meeting if they come up, so. No? Okay.
No question.
Thank you.
Action items, eleven, eleven point one, approval of board member travel expenses Triple I conference. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve board member travel expenses for the Triple I conference.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Brent?
Mr. Serong?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Murio?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Pollock?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Eleven point two, approval of New Year twenty-seven, new high school courses and title changes. Have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve SY twenty-seven, new high school courses and title changes as discussed and presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Murio?
Aye.
Sorry, Dr. Murio?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Dr. Pollock?
Aye.
Mr. Serong?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Action item eleven point three, approval personnel report. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the personnel report as discussed and presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All right.
Ms. Wenmuth?
Aye.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Mr. Serong?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Pollock?
Aye.
Dr. Murio?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Can I have a, or twelve point one, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.